Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board. Today is October 27th. We are at the Bennington Fire Department on the third floor. I'd like to invite you to join me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). 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 (Pledge of Allegiance).
We'll start by introducing the Select Board. Tom Jacobs on the end. Michael Keane. My vice chair Sharon Brush. I'm Chair Greg Van Houten. This is James Carroll. Justin Corcoran. John McFadden. Our town manager Stuart Hurd. And Linda Bermuda's recording. It sounds a little different. We have a PA working tonight, so there's in-room amplification as well as the Cat TV sound, so it seems like they're working that out rather well. Thank Cat TV for cooperating with us on this. All right. The first item is the minutes from October 6th. Do we have ...
Are they being accepted as printed?
Motion?
Second.
In the second. Any comments? Discussion?
As ever, they're great.
Well done. All right. All in favor? And we have one absent.
I believe Justin and myself.
Who's not there?
Okay. And so that was all in favor, whereas six in favor, one absent. Correct?
Two absent.
Two absent. I'm sorry, two absent. So we have five. All right. Yeah, the sound's a little hard to ...
I know it.
Pick up. Okay. Warrants. Do we have any questions on the warrants, Tom?
I haven't got any.
Michael?
I had, but I checked them with Stu. I have the answers I need. Thank you.
Sharon?
I just have a couple. One is on page five, and it's Goldstone Architecture. What entryway on 272 Union Street? Is that the police station?
That's a, well, it's a final specification for 272 Union. Perhaps Mike, you can explain?
Mike?
Dan can. Thank you.
Go ahead.
We have a court order against that property for them to make improvements, and it's been about eight years now, so we had to finally got a court order, and part of that court order was putting together a specification for the improvements so that we could bid it out, so that they could be done, since the owner has refused to comply with the court order.
What property is it? What's the property?
It's on Union Street, U- 270 ...
272.
272.
Is that a multiple unit?
Yes.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Yes.
My parents used to live up there.
Okay. Thank you. And then on page 11, it's US Bank. And it says Deborah Rucker. I'm not sure. It's for $150,000.
Let me see here. Those are all principal and interest payments made, and I'm not sure that Deborah Rucker is, but they run the gamut from the principal payment on the police facility all the way to interest payments on various facilities and part of our major borrowing, apparently. Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
James? Charleston?
I don't have anything to do with it.
John?
All set.
All right. I'm good, too. So warrants are all set. Do we have any citizens who would like to address the board? Go ahead. So one of the microphones, please identify yourself.
Hello. My name's Lyle Westcott, and I live in Bennington. Now, I contacted the Bennington Police Department a couple weeks ago. The cops were at 308 Pleasant Street 25 times in six and a half months. 326 Pleasant Street, which the brother and sister both owned them two apartments, they were there 33 times. That's 58 times in six and a half months. This morning at 308 Pleasant Street, two people were arrested on violation of probation. Probation does not work. They should have been evicted because they were already on probation. Now, the two young guys weren't there when I quoted the US Constitution. But Article 6 of the Constitution says that the US Constitution is supreme law. So even if Vermont State Constitution says you can't enact laws, it's unconstitutional. And Article 7 of that clearly states that all states must ratify to the same of the US Constitution. It is the supreme law of the land. So you guys do have jurisdiction to combat the problems that we've got. I don't want to wait until we got a dead body. Number two, for the thousand-foot law. A friend of mine had access to the Internet, pulled it up. There's five sex offenders living right on Park Street, right between our schools. The sixth one lives on the corner of Park and County. Why do we want rapists near our kids? We've got Bennington School Incorporated rated. That's got a lot of schools. You've got Monument. You've got Molly Stark. And then you've got the schools on East Road and Park Street. I don't want to hear in the news that we have a kid that come up missing, that's kidnapped, abducted, brutally raped, and then murdered. That Hannah Graham was murdered. They've got the guy now, but he abducted her, raped her, and then killed her. I don't want that to be for our state. You guys couldn't put the thousand-foot law in place. And like, I spoke with Greg, and he mentioned making the landlords, whether it's a high police presence, make them pay for the cops showing up there, since he refuses to evict them. It's putting our cops in danger also, and it's putting our community in danger. Now, you all may not realize it. It does affect each and every one of us in this room and in our community. The more burglaries you have, your homeowner insurance goes up. The more fires you have, your homeowner's insurance goes up. Someone gets attacked, there goes your healthcare costs. Insurance companies are allowed to speculate.
Yeah, Lyle. Clearly, the crime rate affects everybody. And my issue with some of these laws, as we've discussed at length, is that some of these laws with the catchy names don't act to prevent crime. They're not showing hard results in preventing crime, and that's my issue. I do want to look at what we can do.
Right.
I mean, we've all talked, we've had a lot of discussions, but as you know, there are limits to what you can do.
Right.
Especially someone who hasn't committed a crime or has fulfilled their penalty. You know, if you've committed a crime, you've been penalized, you get through the process, and you're back living in a community, you can't ban the people. I mean, there's no banishment anymore. You know, we have to live with our neighbors and who they are. And a lot of the issues you've pointed to have been first offenses as well. You know, these things, the thousand-foot law elements don't do anything for first offenses.
But why do we want them to be able to live when they get out here, our kids?
Well, nobody said they want them to live by their kids, but you have to look at it from the other side. How do you actually solve it? Does writing these laws, and we have a lot of the elements that are in these laws are law, and, you know, and if we fund them properly, we can keep an eye on people that are habitual offenders. That's one of the huge issues in any community is funding these things.
Right.
But, you know, to just draw a thousand feet around somebody, you can find things everywhere. Where are they going to live? They wind up living in the woods. You don't know where they are, you know? So there's other issues that law enforcement have had issues with. They can't live with family where people can keep an eye on them. So I appreciate you bringing this ahead of us. You know, I don't want you to get the idea that we're just ignoring it, and there's nothing to do, but there are limitations to what these laws do actually accomplish. And, you know, to say that they haven't been addressed at the state level would be irresponsible, too. And you have, you know, Senator Sears has looked at a lot of these things, and there's a lot of these elements that are on the books and have been enacted, but they do need to be funded, they need to be addressed, and people need to be aware of who their neighbors are. And, you know, the cost to our police department is huge when people, you know, respond hour after hour sometimes at the same address.
Right.
And, you know, I would be interested to see what we can do about that. And we keep asking and trying to find, there's not too many real experts on that around, but...
Yeah. Talk to the ski resorts.
Yeah.
Because they pass the law on a ski resort, if the person goes out of bounds off the ski trail, they charge the perpetrator for the rescue. So it saves taxpayer dollars. Right now, it wastes a lot of taxpayer dollars, keep going back to the same apartments, rearresting the same people.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So if you make the landlord or make the criminal, I really, so it doesn't make taxpayers have to foot the bill every time they respond to these houses. You know, that's why I mentioned to you.
Appreciate it.
You mentioned it, and I was in agreement with that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lyle. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair? I think it's important to note, too, that with the throwing out of the Catalyst Project, part of what that project attempts to address is a closer relationship between the law enforcement agencies and the landlords, and we are actually seeing some of the fruits of that labor. In fact, arrests that were perpetrated this morning, the landlords cooperated fully in that situation, and so I think there's a changing here that's happening simply because we're all trying to work together. We may be much more effective working together and cooperatively than we would be simply by legislating.
Generally the case.
Question? Whoops. Question that I have for you, Stu, with respect to the Catalyst Program. How did the Catalyst Program, and you haven't done a full rollout on it yet, but how did that dovetail, or how did it help today with respect to the arrests? Well, it simply, one of the issues that the municipality has committed to through the Catalyst Program is to improve infrastructure in neighborhoods, to reach out to landlords to try to get them to cooperate with the municipality and with the police department in identifying problem neighborhoods and problem individuals who are moving in and around those neighborhoods. And so today, we understood that there was an individual who was living at one of the addresses that were mentioned earlier. It turns out there was an outstanding warrant on that individual, and we were able to effect an arrest this morning without violence, and the landlords helped in that regard. Without, I don't, I understand that, you know, we need a greater rollout on the Catalyst Program, but what briefly are the incentives or disincentives for having a landlord cooperate? There are no incentives or disincentives. It's part of being a part of your community.
Jim, also, you know, the landlords that I know in general are not happy about the situation. A lot of them, they're unaware of what to do, or they're frustrated in trying to deal with it. So, I mean, if we can give them an avenue to try and deal with some of the issues, I support that. But that's it. It's, you know, I don't think just passing a law is going to clear all their people out, you know, that they have problems with. And, you know, we've had people in our neighborhood that had similar type of response records, and when they left the neighborhood, our neighbors were all very, you know, relieved that they were gone, but they, you know, it wasn't going to change the problem for the police department or the town at large, because they were going to go somewhere else and behave the same way or misbehave the same way. So, you know, we need to address that problem in the whole, so.
Right.
Thank you, Lyle.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Our next item is going to be the ADA Sidewalk Audit Presentation. This is an ongoing conversation. It began with a presentation, I believe, a year ago, year and a half ago, something like that, where we had the Americans with Disabilities Act provisions have been evaluated around town, and we're going to welcome Charlie Murphy, who is going to lead us through this. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Greg. I want to thank the board for having us here tonight, having us on your agenda. Like Greg said, my name is Charlie Murphy. I work at the Vermont Center for Independent Living, and what we're going to present is the result of a sidewalk audit that we did back in June. I want to also introduce some participants in the audience. Dr. Maggie Bernstein is there, and Tracy Dormand, Paula Mind, and also Caitlin Emerson from the Alliance for Community Transformation, and specifically a walkable Bennington will be talking. A little bit of background. We started this about a year ago last June with an ADA community meeting that the Vermont Center for Independent Living put together. From that meeting, it was determined that one of the issues that we were going to work on was better access to sidewalks in the community. And one of our members, Nancy Sanford, has been here before, and she is one of the key motivators, participants in getting access for her. She uses a walker to get around town. So from that meeting, we formed a committee, the ADA Accessibility Work Group. We subsequently met with Stu, with Greg, with Dan Monks, and with RJ Jolly about, you know, the sidewalk situation. We collaborated with American Association Retired Persons, AARP. They had a tool, a survey, that came out of the complete streets legislation that took effect a couple of years ago. I don't remember the specific date. But we used that tool, it took into consideration streets, sidewalks, intersections, behavior of drivers, and the safety of the people that are transversing the streets. We met back in this past June, on July, on June 11th, at the Vermont Department of Health Conference Room. That was our staging area. And from there, the 20 people that participated that day broke up into two groups, and we, one group went east on Main Street to Pleasant, and then down Pleasant and back to the conference area. And then another group went on North Street, north, to County, and then back down on the other side. So we were able to get to everyone the results of the survey through electronic in your packet, through email, and also there's a hard copy. We met with Stu and with Greg and with RJ, and also Jim Sullivan of the Bennington County Regional Planning Commission back in September to, you know, present the results and to discuss a little bit. And we also, well, we want to thank the town for the work that's been done on Silver Street, Bradford, and Safford Street for the new sidewalks that are there. The survey indicated that there's been, there's some good stuff out there, and there's some stuff that needs to, you know, still be worked on and improved in the specific areas that we surveyed. So that's why we're here tonight. We want to, you know, we want to continue the dialogue that we have with you folks and participate in continuing a more accessible benefit. And at this point, I'm going to introduce my colleague Tracy Dormand. She's just going to say a couple of words, and we'll go from there.
If you don't mind, I prefer to sit, some safer sitting. Does this just go down?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Close enough? That better?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. As Charlie introduced me, I'm Tracy Dormand, and although I'm not a Bennington resident, I work, shop, and play in Bennington. I represent the disability community. I have, I'm an amputee. Long story short, have a prosthesis, and it's becoming increasingly difficult for me to access our community. So I use a cane full-time. There have been occasions where I've used a walker and/or a wheelchair in certain situations. And I welcome and thank you for opening the dialogue with the town in improving accessibility for persons with disabilities in our community. I'm very proud of this report. There was a lot of work involved in this report, and I hope that, you know, the recommendations are taken seriously and that persons with disabilities or the ADA accessibility is a forethought in your future projects, and as your budget allows, I would like that to be a priority for the town of Bennington. I plan to be a community member ongoing, and I think that our visitors that come to our community, the more accessibility there is available, the more they're going to come and stay. And I think that would be a very benefit, a very big benefit for our community, not just Bennington Town, but Bennington County. And I thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion and welcome recommendations that ongoing for our community with VCIL participating and working together with us as partners in making it a better community. Thank you.
Oops.
Good evening. I'm Maggie Bernstein. I'm a resident of Bennington. I have been living here for just short of five years. Prior to living here, I was on the teaching staff of Community College here in Bennington for about eight years. So I'd like to speak with you briefly about a before and after. Before I was disabled and teaching at CCV, I loved Bennington. I loved getting around downtown. I used to go to All Days Onion's from CCV for lunch. I used to go to South Street for coffee in the afternoon. I could just take a walk on Main Street and look at the shop windows and get some fresh air. That was before. When I became disabled and realized that I needed to move, I chose Bennington because I was so charmed by coming here teaching. And I have been heartily disappointed. I feel unwelcome. I feel isolated from the community at large. It's very hard for me to get around. And the report that we have written, and I am a volunteer at VCIL, the report that we have written is dry until you attach it to the meaning for the people who live here and the quality of life that we may be not entitled to. So walk with me for one minute. If I were walking out of CCV and wanted to head down Main Street, I would have to cross the street at the four corners. Now, that crossing from north to south, the long crossing, has, and it's in our report, has a green light, a walk light, that lasts for 26 seconds. I can't walk across that street without great fear. That's unfortunate, and I'm not alone. I am part of the disabled community in this town, which represents, is represented by 20% of the population. That's a whole bunch of us who are being kept back from things that should be pleasant in our lives. But let us for a moment imagine that with luck, I have crossed the four corners. I am now walking on the south side of Main Street, and I can't look in the shop windows because the pavement is so uneven. There are pavers that I could trip over. And again, it's not me. It's a whole bunch of us. And finally, the one thing I want to finally point out to you is, I cannot make a list of things to do downtown on Main Street because I never know where there might be a place to park. And because of my limited mobility, I may not be able to get to where I really wanted to go. Those are all things that are included in a non-personal way in our report. And I thank you for your attention to these details and hope that we can continue working together to improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very, very, like, back Caitlin Emerson.
Hi. I just want to echo the thanks that everyone else has given the Select Board for taking an interest in making our entire community more accessible. I am blessed that I don't, my disabilities are mostly hidden disabilities, and I'm blessed that I don't have to currently walk with a walker or crutches or a cane. However, a lot of my friends, and many of whom aren't here tonight, so that's why I'm up here, do walk with walkers or canes. And as you heard, there are a lot of things contained in the report. We know that some of them, and we've heard through discussions, that some of them would be very expensive, and we understand the limitations that come with that. There are a lot of them, however, that I believe that with your creative thinking put together, could probably be solved very inexpensively and really make a big difference. And one of them is something that Maggie just referred to, which is the crossing time. And I'm aware that the crossing time is within, quote, "legal limits" under various disability conventions. However, when our teams were crossing, I can tell you that approximately half of our team could not get across in time. So I just want to ask you to consider some things like that that certainly put some teeth in your wonderful efforts to make this town more accessible while you're waiting to figure out how to do the long-term planning and get the finances together. Thank you.
Okay. Kate?
Hi. My name is Katie Emerson, and I'm at Maricopa Vista, serving with the Alliance for Community Transformations. And I just want to say thank you for having us, and thank you to the ADA Accessibility Group. I've learned a lot through our couple of meetings, and I've gained a lot of perspective. One of my interests with ACT is the Walkable Bennington Project. Part of having a healthy community design is having communities where people can walk to stores, can walk to work, visit their friends, they exercise, they interact with people, which have great health benefits and also economic benefits to the town. ACT did a general walking audit in September of 2013, but this ADA audit, which, as people have said, was special because it looked at the perspective of someone with a disability. And as it says in the report, currently, people with disabilities cannot walk the streets as they currently are, so they are being excluded from the health benefits of walking and are often isolated, especially in the wintertime, when it's icy and it's just not safe for people to be on the streets. So I just wanted to come here to share my support, and hopefully that we can make a plan to address some of their issues. And I also recently learned that the Bennington County Regional Commission is looking at making improvements on Benmont Avenue, and we're having a public, I just want to do a little shout-out promotion, thank you, to the Public Concerns Meeting. It's going to be on Tuesday, November 18th, at 6:00 PM at the mill on Benmont Avenue. So if anyone has any concerns and would want to come to that, they can talk to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
I just want to close by saying I have an ask, and that ask is, as soon as I find the mic. The ask is, Greg, could you be our contact person, and could we meet with you quarterly around what we discussed tonight and with the ...
Let me check with, back with you on that. I'm not sure about whether it be me or someone else.
Okay.
But we'll see if we can get somebody on your regular meeting schedule.
Okay.
I wanted to discuss that with the board.
Okay. Thank you very much, then. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Charlie.
Sure. Not official metro of the road, but I don't know if it was touched on before, but the sidewalk pattern that you use, was that touched on?
Yeah, we talked, RJ, about the expansion joints and stuff.
Yeah. They're huge. They're huge.
The gaps, right.
Yeah. And these chairs just go crazy with them. That's why it's promoting me and others, and the wheelchairs, power wheelchairs, to go on the road. And I know you can't pick up all the old ones until they're needed, but don't have this whole pattern used. this whole pattern used. Perfect one is by O'Malley's Pet Shop.
Okay.
There's a perfect one there, it's almost seamless, and you can go right over it. And that's been there on Gate Street for a long time.
What about a diagonal pattern, Mike?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, it would be like at an angle instead of, you know, 90 degrees.
Maybe it's just the seam. If you see the new ones, there's a lip down and lip up, and you wouldn't think of it looking at it, you'd say, let's chair go right over it. For some reason it don't. And these chairs are expensive, and as you get, you loosen up the mechanics.
Rattle apart. Yeah, after the last meeting, actually RJ went down and looked at a couple of sidewalks with the group to see which ones they liked and which ones functioned better than others.
Well, that's what I was going to say, I mean, using the, like on these, using federal dollars, state dollars, there's some type of something that goes in between the two slabs, and that has a tendency to rise depending on frost. So you go along, you hit that hole. But then with silver and whatnot, we looked at it, and there's that dip. What they do is they, you know, they use a type of...
They use a wider pattern or something.
But I know what you're talking about is like, it's just like a little seam there, like a little...
Little seam, and I don't see any more erosion with the one single seam than the others. And I think actually, the ones that I've seen, there is less rise and fall like Charlie's talking about, so. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it. I'll tell you, I was involved in an inventory of downtown a few years ago of trying to put together what was there, you know, assets, challenges and whatnot, and it was no small project. It took quite a few people a long time to get it together, so I appreciate the work on this. This is a lot of hard work. I also want to point out that in these meetings, I've found that a lot of this is in the scope of the department's work, and these comments are easily incorporated in some cases. In some cases, they'll steer the decisions in a different direction.
Go ahead, Tom.
What is the management's response to the survey right now? Is it just to have RJ look at it and try to respond piecemeal basis and look at it budgetary times?
In fact, that is the sense. Several of the issues that were pointed out were the lack of audio signals and pedestrian signals at County and North. We are going to be budgeting for that, and you'll probably see that in your FY '16 budget. It's not inexpensive, but we think it should be done. As to the four corners crossing time, we're looking at possibly replacing the controller so that we can offer parallel movements, so that when traffic is moving north-south, pedestrians would be able to move in the same direction at that time. It would reduce the wait that you have before you can cross, and it might in fact extend the length because we're trying to push some 6,000 vehicles a day through that intersection. And so the traveling time for the vehicular movements is longer than the pedestrian signal. So we might be able to address a couple of those things. And then it really is going to be piecemeal as to how we address some of the other things that have been mentioned here. We're not going to be able to do major renovation projects, but we certainly, we don't use the same seam that Mike Bethel is referring to. That's a state-designed seam in the sidewalks. We use a different seam. It's seamless, if you would. So you don't get that bump. So there are some things that we do differently than state projects and state standards require, and we're going to be focusing on doing those kinds of projects our way to the extent that we are able to, especially when using state federal funds.
Is there any hardware equipment for the crossings that you can have an option of how long the crossing is, you know, like button A for 30 seconds, button B for 40? Does anything like that exist?
Not to my knowledge. The controllers are relatively complex, and the more signals you add to the controller, the more signal time and variations in those signals. I mean, four corners, we have pedestrian signals, we have left-turn signals, and we have through signals for vehicular traffic. The more complex those controllers become, the more difficult it is to accommodate everybody's desire. And at some point, you end up with that, and I won't use the term clash, but the convenience for the pedestrian versus the convenience for the traveling public. And you've got to make a determination based on the amount of traffic you're trying to move through the community as to how you best serve each of those entities.
Got a question for you, Stu. With respect to, you know, with all due respect to these people that have disabilities, are there, can you, do you have any numbers with respect to anybody that's been injured in those crosswalks over, let's say, the last year? At the four corners in particular?
I don't. In fact, I don't think that we've had an accident with a pedestrian vehicle in the four corners. Those accidents generally happen elsewhere where there's, I mean, the four corners, it's a four-way stop when pedestrian movements are occurring. And one of the risks that when you try to increase the time that people have to cross, and you start talking about moving parallel movements, now you've got right-turning vehicles, you've got some other things that you've got to think about in the timing sequence so that the pedestrian has a chance to get off the sidewalk and into the street, and then it becomes the responsibility of the driver to be aware that that pedestrian is there. So, and, you know, in Vermont...
We also have the issue of people not waiting for the signal because the wait time is so long, so you need to address that.
So it's more complicated than one would think, but we don't have the capabilities, Justin, as far as I know, to do the kind of adjustments that you would have on, sort of on the fly.
Sharon?
I just have a question. The, those textured things that are at the ends of the, by the crosswalks, I know some of them are cracked and broken. Is that a big expense to at least replace the ones that are...
We replace them generally as we go along. You recall when we first, Main Street is a Class 1 Town Highway. The state takes the responsibility to pave that street. And when we last did it, which was almost a decade ago, they installed these plastic dome onto the existing sidewalks, and frankly, that didn't work.
Didn't last.
So as we have come to those, we're moving away from the plastic and moving into a, and here again, I'm not the guy in the field, so, but it's either a metal or a formed dome that is part of the concrete, so it's in the concrete, less likely to be caught by a plow, less likely to be pulled up. So it's...
So replacing the plastic ones, we'd have to dig up the sidewalk somehow?
They will eventually all be gone.
Okay.
Excuse me, Greg, can I ask you a question? You said the state does those wide patterns, state funds?
It's a state standard, yes. And so when you're using state dollars or federal dollars to do a particular project, you end up with that kind of a cut if that's the specification that is provided to the contractor.
Now, was state dollars used for School Street?
I don't recall exactly where the dollars were. It could have been a combination, but...
But School Street was just done, and that was the wider pattern.
Yeah, well, but it was done by a contractor, and we don't do them that way, and we're encouraging and changing our specifications so that doesn't continue to occur.
So the contractors won't use that wide pattern?
That's correct.
Well, on Silver Street, you know, RJ pointed out to us, there is like a dip, maybe half an inch kind of dip that you go through, and that's what I think you folks are going to continue to use. I think what Mike was talking about is the old stuff over by, over on Gate Street by the pharmacy, where it's just like a, just a straight little slit.
But Stuart, you're saying that if we can't, we won't use that dip anymore with our funds, but we may have to do it with federal funds though?
It depends on the specifications that are being utilized. If we're drafting the specifications, it's going to be our design.
Now, we have actually spoken to V-Trans about this topic as a result of you folks bringing this to us. You know, we're trying to get people on board that there is a difference. You know, I walk down the street, I don't notice it in a sidewalk, the people at V-Trans may not notice it, but when somebody brings it to your attention, it makes perfect sense. So I, they're slow-moving sometimes, but I don't think they have any interest in doing something that's detrimental to the...
Well, to the town's credit, so I want to thank Stuart, this group for outside here, this door now, you can get in without having to strain a vein. And also the curb, you when it raised or lowered or whatever, you bevel that down, so it's easier to get in, so I thank you for that. Stuart told me you wouldn't do it purposely, but this group kind of took it.
I also told you, I also told you, Mike, you had to slow down when you're traveling up the road.
Well, I was trying to run a little bit.
I just wanted to do a quick question.
Go ahead.
Is there potential for that controller to be included in this upcoming '16 budget?
That really depends, Charlie, on the funds that are available, whether or not we can squeeze it in. We are looking into that, though, at the present time.
We'll try our best.
Looking at the different signals, how widespread do we typically have traffic signals, I guess, for pedestrians?
In the four corners case, that was a signalization and timing sequence that was established by the state of Vermont to meet the ADA standards. The signal timing will depend on the width of the roadway, the length, the amount of traffic that is traveling through the roadway, whether or not there's even a need for a signal, if in fact there's a four-way stop. There's a whole host of things that go into the determination of whether or not it should be signalized. But I think once you signalize it, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we continue to upgrade those intersections so that they have the audio and visual signals that are now the current standard.
So it'd be typically brought about from a pedestrian study, traffic study?
Yes.
Okay. Have we had that done on the roads that were identified in the survey?
All of the intersections that are signalized, we have managed to upgrade them except for North and County.
Right, there is maybe a half a dozen that were in this report that had mentioned wanting a signal. Do we have the pedestrian traffic studies for those?
We haven't, no.
So we won't be able to cross that until we have some study done?
Well, I'd have to take a look at the list again, John, but I think that that's something we'll approach as we come into budget time, is to, we'll try to address those things in the neighborhoods in which we are working, where we've determined that street and sidewalk work needs to be done. We'll attempt to address those particular areas.
Yeah, and then... Oh, go ahead.
Do we have a priority in this type of, so we can respond on a quarterly basis with my piecemeal suggestion? Is there a prioritization that way to remove these types of issues?
We haven't moved in that direction at this point. We can certainly incorporate that into our planning process. I mean, you're talking about pedestrian amenities and pedestrian improvements, and as I said, as we select the streets and the neighborhoods that we work in, we do bring those sidewalks and the ramps and everything else up to code. But are we looking at those streets to see whether or not they should be signalized? Not at this time.
I just would think that would be part of the consideration when we're looking at the whole picture, but that's just my uneducated... Well, one of the issues we talked about also was the ongoing battle, I guess, trying to keep pedestrian crossings properly marked on the pavement. I know RJ's tried several different things in the last few years to try and keep that paint clearly on the pavement, and, you know, in different roads, it wears faster than on the street.
There is no paint, that's good.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, I mean, that's key. When you drive down the road, if you see a clearly marked pedestrian crossing, it does call out to traffic, but I'm not sure what the current status is that we were talking about that at the last meeting, but trying to find something and some other ways to really call out those pedestrian crossings as opposed to having a light every 300 feet.
There are some options. I mean, there's an email that I could send you that Peter Rubin, you know, put together from his observations. As we mentioned with you, there's a potential for like a LED light that can be put on a pole, whatever, that a person could signal that they're in a crosswalk, or also some very, you know, I guess, eye-catching kind of whatever material on both sides of the street to catch people's eyes. But what I want to just add is that as a person that's blind trying to cross the street around town here, when people don't, you know, obey the law and stop pedestrians at the crosswalks, it's a real danger. And that, and you might say, you know, has there anybody been clipped down on the four corners? And they may not, they may not want to go there because they may not realize, or they may realize that it's going to take them too long to get across. And it may be more perceived situation of safety rather than actual being...
Yeah, I see a lot of violations on that in the crosswalks when I'm crossing downtown. Sometimes it'll take two or three cars before somebody actually, and I generally stand right out there so somebody can see me, and it'll take two or three.
And just keep on going by. But I was just going to make this adjustment, perhaps warnings could be given out, you know, like what they do with the clip and tick pad stuff where, you know, warnings given out as advertised and people, you know, at least try to get a little accustomed to that that might happen.
Some big yield to pedestrian signs.
I would like to add to the comments about the four corners. I agree with what Charlie just said. Maybe there haven't been any accidents there because people are so selective. We don't use the four corners, we simply don't.
Right.
And then I ask you to think for a moment. If you remember, the data tell us that one in five members or people who live in Bennington have a disability. Let's assume that only 10% have visible disabilities. Think for a moment, how many of us do you see around town? How many wheelchairs? How many walkers? How many canes, not only crossing the streets, but even walking on them?
Well, I see people traveling up Benmont on a regular basis, and that's, you know, another one of the targets, obviously, that, you know, Katie just mentioned. That's, you know, there are certainly some places that need a lot of work. Happy to say that Pleasant Street is on the construction plan, you know, a couple of the places that are mentioned here are being done, and a few places that were in last year's report have already been addressed, and, you know, which is good to see. But, you know, the list that RJ brings to us is, there's usually nothing on there we think doesn't need to be done, where it's trying to do more and find that, but we appreciate it, it's a good thing. Mike, did you have one more thing?
Yeah, I know you guys take this seriously, and I appreciate it, so these folks, but I'm just, I'm looking at your board here, and other than the two whippersnappers, young whippersnappers right now, man, the rest of you is getting pretty damn old, and I'm going to be walkers and canes and wheelchairs, and so I hope you...
Speak for yourself.
Well, disability would happen, so, yeah.
Sure.
That's true.
And, you know, I'm actually very glad that the staff, the management, does take this very seriously, and anytime one of these points have come up, there has been something in their schedule that, you know, it's rarely, do you get a blank stare, and nobody knows what you're talking about. It's usually on somebody's list somewhere, it's just a matter of getting to them. So thank you for keeping it in front of us. This is the right time of year to do it, because we'll be discussing budgets in the next few months for the following budget.
Certainly, yeah, certainly appreciate your hard work. Took a lot of time to put that together. Did a nice job.
Great, appreciate it. All righty. The next item is the status of job availability. Wendy Morse had some numbers that caught some people's attention, and I'd like to invite her up to talk about this a little bit. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself?
I'm Wendy Morse, I'm a regional manager with the Vermont Department of Labor. So I want to preface this by saying I am definitely not a statistician, so I can certainly share these numbers with you, but there may be questions that you have that I'm just simply not going to know the answers to, and I certainly will find them for you. So to give you a little bit of background of why we started to have this conversation, I'm a member of the Bennington Economic Development Partners, and this past week, I presented some information to the group on the jobs numbers. You know, very often in our community, Department of Labor, I'm sure you folks have heard from community members that say, Bennington has no jobs to offer, there's nothing here, you know, I can never find anything. So we started to have this discussion because what we'd like to do is actually change the perception that Bennington actually does have a lot to offer. And there are a lot of us, and there are many members in this room, actually, that work very hard on workforce development projects that really help address the skills for, skill development for workers so that they can help meet the need of employers. And these numbers really do speak to that. So currently, the labor market rate for, or the unemployment rate for the state of Vermont is at 4.4%. It is a slight increase of 3/10 of a percent, but it's still the fifth lowest in the country. And it is, our rate this year is really still in comparison to where we were last year. Last year, we saw a slight increase as well, and then the numbers... kind of even out, and then we ended up lower than we did the previous year. And we're still on that same track for this year. So what does that mean for Bennington? So Bennington's current unemployment rate is 5.1%, which is still lower than last year. And exactly what does that 5.1% mean? That means that there are 600 unemployed individuals as a percent of the total labor force numbers, which are 12,150. So the unemployment rate is, again, for Bennington, it is lower than it was last year, so that is the good news. Even though we have had some, you know, pretty significant layoffs, our number, our rate is still low. So the good news is that, and these numbers came from our job match system that we call Vermont Job Link, which is the Vermont Department of Labor's job match system. So I just pulled these numbers at 4:30 this afternoon, and I have the ability, and actually, any job seeker has the ability to search jobs within our job bank two ways. We can either search for jobs that are specifically employers that have listed with Vermont Job Link, ones that have connected with staff directly, or have entered those postings themselves through Vermont Job Link. And we can also expand that job search beyond our Vermont Job Link system and look for and grab information on job postings from other sites as well. So within a 25-mile radius, and I like to use 25 miles because that really is representative of our standard commutable pattern for people that are living in Bennington, people pretty regularly commute within that 25-mile radius if you use 05201 as the center point. So within that 25-mile radius, in Vermont Job Link, there are 174 openings as of today, so nearly 200 openings. If I expand that beyond just our Job Link system and look for jobs that are listed on other sites as well, I have a total of 1,116 job postings. Now, remember, this is just job postings. This is not necessarily how many openings there are. There are for each one of those. There may be one job posting that might have 10 openings. We just don't know those numbers. This is just based on job postings alone. So you can see there's actually a lot of activity out there, and these are all active listings. Vermont Job Link, I've been asked quite a bit, you know, what exactly do those numbers mean? You know, how many jobs are available within manufacturing? How many are available within healthcare? It's really a very difficult number to get when you're looking at postings that go beyond our Vermont Job Link system. But Vermont Department of Labor does work with an initiative called Make Vermont Home Campaign. So we have some folks in Montpelier, actually, that will survey employers all over the state. And I was able to get some of that data for this presentation tonight, just to kind of show you what is really happening within Bennington specifically. And these are actually annual numbers. But for Bennington, we had 163 employers that were surveyed for the year 2013. Within the next, they're either hiring now, or within the next few weeks to months, there's 112 of those that will be hiring. Percent of the total employers available, that's a percent that represents 68.7, so we're not even, you know, we're just a little bit more than halfway surveying all the employers that are in this area. Total positions identified, this was the number that was really amazing to me, 544. The industry with the most openings, healthcare and social assistance. And the occupational group, employers that are having the most difficult time recruiting for their positions are the sales and related. So there is definitely, you know, what we hear from employers is there is definitely a gap in terms of where they see, they have a hard time filling their positions because they have a hard time finding the right skill match in qualified applicants to fill those positions. But you can clearly see from the statistics that there are, there's certainly a number of jobs that really are available. And right now, if you're looking at, you know, 600 being unemployed as a representative of the total labor force numbers, there's almost two jobs, you know, two jobs per each job seeker out there right now, which is, you know, pretty remarkable.
Wendy, that's very great news.
Absolutely.
Thank you for doing this. It was kind of short notice to ask you to come in with that, and I appreciate it. One of the questions that always comes up at any of these conversations is how do we get the job seeker and the employer together? I don't think there's any single easy answer to that. I've been through the process recently in hiring. There are several sources. It's interesting to see who responds from what sources. You don't have a lot of time to interview people, so you have to be kind of picky about where you put it so you get quality interviews, I'm sure. And then, you know, there are people who are interviewing just to fill out a form at the unemployment office. There are people who are really looking for jobs. You're trying to sort through that. And the same thing on the employment side. They're looking for a place where they can get a job that fills their needs and does that. So from your office and whatever, what are you seeing in that direction as far as initiatives? Any direction? I've had the same conversation with the CDC, you know, as far as getting this information in the right hands.
Right. Yeah, and we do work very closely with the CDC as well as all the other partners, you know, in the area. You know, I always think that Department of Labor is the best place for people to start, you know, whether you're unemployed, underemployed, you know, looking at trying to switch careers or switch jobs. I think that we're the best place to start, because we can help individuals and train individuals on how to best unveil those openings. You know, there's all sorts of different ways that people can look for work. One thing that we talk a lot about is the hidden job market, you know, and that networking is a way to find that next job. I always like to refer to that as kind of fishing, casting out your resume and seeing what you might snag. In reality, though, not, I think that we're way underutilized, both by the employer as well as the job seeker. And that's something that we are definitely trying to change perception of, and we're trying to do a lot more outreach, because there are two sides of what we do. We do, you know, we do service employers as well as job seekers. And I always like to say we work with 100% of the population, no matter who you are. So, but I do think that we're probably the best, you know, first start for anybody. Did that answer the question?
Yes. Ford, any questions for Wendy?
Just one. When talking about these types of situations where we have job openings but no one to fill it, have you been working with, or we've been working with the school board, some of us more than others, and bringing in the CDC to have these conversations, are we putting the training in the right spots for the people? And have you seen some shortcomings there on our side, something that we might be able to help push, or the school board might be able to help push, or the CDC?
Yeah. That's a hard one to address, because it sometimes takes a lot of time for one of these projects to launch. You know, the most recent example is the LNA class that the CDC was just successful in starting. That was a project that we started having conversations with probably four years ago. So there's often lots of different layers and lots of different moving, you know, people. And so sometimes it's really hard to get those projects launched. I think anytime that we have, you know, involvement from, you know, folks such as yourself on any of these meetings that occur all the time, monthly, around town, is going to be helpful and a win-win for helping with the workforce development and economic development side, because you can't have one discussion without the other. Those two go hand in hand.
Yeah, Wendy, whoa. That was God speaking. Talk about the levels of jobs. Are there entry level, mid-level, high level? What's the range of jobs?
Just kind of doing a quick, you know, scan at what is available out there. And again, it's really hard. Once you start digging really deep down into these statistics and you're looking at it from a local level standpoint, it is much more complicated to kind of get all this information. But just doing kind of more of a cursory scan, it's very wide-ranging. Anything from temporary to full-time, part-time, permanent, entry level, professional, some requiring certifications or licenses, and then others not really requiring any experience. So it really is very wide-ranging.
One of the things that I've heard continually over the past couple of years, as I've talked to people who have come to the region with what we call a trailing spouse, in other words, someone gets an offer of a job here, they come, but there is no way for the spouse to find a job, whether the spouse is male or female, because there doesn't seem to be any sort of central clearinghouse of information. Can't look at the papers for that. It depends upon the job site that you look at, the website. Is there any sort of real central clearinghouse of information that would cover these jobs in a region?
You know, again, I go back to, it really should be, you know, DOL, Vermont Department of Labor, that has that. But really, there are multiple job boards out there that all have different goals with them. You know, and I guess I go back to saying why I think that, you know, Department of Labor would be a really good first step, and why I think it's important for folks that are new to Bennington to, you know, get referred to Department of Labor by whomever they may be working with coming here, is that we are familiar with, you know, where all those job boards are, and we can, again, educate the job seeker on how to best find them, again, because they all have different goals in mind, any of those job boards.
Can you talk about how you folks do your outreach to employers to let them know that you're there, for example?
Um...
What kind of programs do you have to reach the employers?
Yeah. Well, kind of a new initiative that we're doing right now is we're offering hiring events for employers. So if an employer has a specific need, we'll host a hiring event right in our office, right there in the state office complex. And the only thing we ask is maybe two or three weeks lead time, so that we can start to scan our talent banks and start to recruit and bring people in for that hiring event. But that is one way to do it, is when we do see employers that do have openings, we'll actually call them, we cold-call them, to say, hey, here we are. We also have employers that just naturally come to us. And we also host two times a year in most, actually, I think all of our regions now around the state, job fairs. Sometimes are more than two times a year.
Thank you. Is there any split or spread in the jobs that you've mentioned, you may or may not know this, between jobs that might be permanent and jobs that are contract or temporary?
As far as a percentage of...
Yeah.
I don't know those numbers.
Thank you.
Great. Tom?
I want to thank you, because this is a good report to the community, because I think the community, like myself, over the recent past, has said, you know, Bennington, job, job, jobs. So I hear tonight that there are jobs out there. I think it's a question of matching up the individuals, and that's a real challenge to the department, I'm sure. And this is a good first start. I'd like to see, maybe in another session, the workforce development report, sort of taking the same approach, so we can get the lineup of jobs available versus the skills that you need. Because I think that's another part of the discussion. We can have jobs, but if you're not employable, and I can use that wisely, I hope, then we're going to be not being helpful. So I think that's really an important consideration. Also, I think the town can be useful, and Mike, with our website, you know, becoming basically a kiosk for making the information available, so that, and the word gets out, that if you're looking for a job in Bennington, you can go to the Town of Bennington website, and there's a linkage for those folks. These are just observations that I have right now, but I think this is a good start. Thank you.
Mary, any other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to ask Wendy, it's my understanding that there's one company, for example, locally, that's currently hiring, but applicants are required to apply to a temp agency, in other words. So are those kinds of openings included in the pictures you just gave?
Yes. Yes. And I want to, temp agencies are not always a bad place to get a job, actually. A lot of times, employers do hire through a temp agency to have that individual work out that probationary period, and then they're brought directly on payroll. It's an interesting way to use the temp agency. We actually promote, and we do work with, the temp agencies as well.
Yeah, it's become very common, because they'll do the payroll, they'll handle all the recruiting and all that stuff. And then if somebody doesn't work out for one reason or another, they're just ending their temporary employment. They're not dealing with an employment termination or something like that.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
I just have a question about apprenticeships. I have a family member that came to the state in the media and participated in the apprenticeship program through the state of Vermont, and is still working in that field today. Worked very well. It was a four-year program on the job training, paid training, and education as well. So I wondered if I hear that to participate in the apprenticeship program in Vermont today, Bennington residents or county, are required to go to Rutland to receive the education portion. And I think that's a real disadvantage for our community. So I would like to see that reversed back towards the Bennington community like it was once was. So is there any discussion about increasing apprenticeship opportunities in this quarter?
All the time.
What are your views?
Well, actually, federally, there is a push towards the apprenticeship model. And it is something that, you know, Department of Labor is a state, is trying to increase apprenticeship opportunities. Historically, it's been largely in the skilled trades of, you know, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC. But we're actually looking at trying to expand that beyond that. In the state of Vermont, childcare has also been something that's been really widely used, that's really taken off. In this day and age of technology, we don't necessarily have to be bound by, you know, classroom with walls in which to learn. So there may be opportunities for a more transient learning style. It is hard. Those apprenticeship models are really hard, because it is, you know, something that a person spends 40-plus hours in that job, in the field, working underneath a master in that trade, and then is required to travel, right now, sometimes, you know, two-hour-round trip, and then take, you know, two- to three-hour classroom training at night. So it is a very, very long day, and it is a huge commitment. The classes are not always in Rutland for Bennington. It depends on how many apprentices they have at a certain level. If they have enough apprentices at the same level in this area, they'll actually, and they have, they'll actually hold classes down here so that people don't need to travel. You know, I've even, you know, made the idea of, you know, looking at Manchester as being even that midpoint, you know, even if we could get half the distance to have those a standard offering, that would be a great thing. It's a win-win for both communities. So it is, those are ongoing discussions.
Thanks. Mike, I'm sorry. Mike, did you have a question for Wendy?
Yeah, particularly those either people who are on either disability or welfare or some kind of assistance to get back into the workforce that are penalized, so they have to give up one, do another. Is there a trial period or something like that? I wonder, you didn't mention on the minimum wage for these jobs, most of them above minimum wage? Are they minimum wage?
So as far as the wages go, the wages, again, they vary. Some of them could be minimum wage right on up to highly paying wage jobs. In terms of the disability question, there is something called the Ticket to Work Program, which does allow a little bit of that buffer zone. We do work very closely with Volk Rehab and some other agencies that do work with folks who do have disabilities that are trying to transition back to the workforce to some capacity. It doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, full-time, whatever a person's work capacity is. We do work very closely with our partners. It's usually the, we're not the experts in that field. It's, you know, if someone's working with Volk Rehab, they'll help with the accommodations piece, and we may be able to come in and provide some additional supports through the Workforce Investment Act program, which can provide things like OJT, classroom training, a work, what we call a work experience or a work trial. There are different, you know, definitely other programs that we can help with that helps an individual transition to employment.
Is there anything for people who are on welfare, like anybody like single mothers or some people who just lost a job? or some people who just lost a job and they want to go over and get back? With lots of statistics, when you throw it out there, it leaves a negative connotation about our community that, oh, we have all these jobs available, we're extremely lazy to work, and I don't think that's what you want for, you know, we're not there.
No, yeah.
And I'd like to see more talk about getting people from our level to another level to satisfy these supposedly employers and then in terms of employers, you start paying, I guess in January, they're going to have the minimum wage raised anyway in the state, 60, 70, 80, 90, or something like that. I mean, that's, you know, every time the district gets thrown out there, it wasn't me that it sounds like Bennington area doesn't want to work. I don't think that's what you're...
Right. No, I think, that's exactly right. We're trying to get, there's connections that need to be made and...
So people can get back into the workforce.
Creative Workforce Solutions, for instance, is an agency that does exactly what you're talking about. Find people who have issues to get, you know, and help them get back into the workforce and find internships and things like that where they can get...
Does anybody have to be on welfare for whatever reason, it's, they're not stupid, they know that if I stay here, I can make more, and going here, I'm going to stay here. They have to be given incentive to say, I don't want to be here, I want to be in the workforce.
Yeah, and we actually do work with a lot of folks that, again, because we work with 100% of the population, there's a grant program that we work with that I mentioned earlier, which is the Workforce Investment Act. There's two different eligibility categories for that. One is low income, so it definitely would cover, you know, that population you're speaking of.
Do you have more about that?
Oh, yes, we offer orientations one to two times per month, absolutely. We also connect with all of our community partners that, you know, may have, you know, pockets of that demographic that they're working with. And the other piece of the Workforce Investment Act is the dislocated worker side, so folks that have lost their job to no fault of their own and they may be unlikely to return to that previous occupation, they would qualify for services through this grant as well. Yep.
I'd just like to make one more comment.
Sure.
It's become apparent to me in my work with these, I know that a person, participant on Reach Up has access to a vehicle through the Widdow's Garage of Arlington. But persons with disabilities that aren't Reach Up participants do not have access to that vehicle. I know there's other people that are excluded, but I just think, you know, I don't know where the funding comes from or who needs to, you know, look at that, but I just hope like that to be out there.
So matchups for getting to an employer if you have an issue with that, right?
It's a huge issue.
Sure. Transportation always is, yeah. Thank you. All right, well, I guess to summarize, if you have employment needs one side or the other, get in touch with the Department of Labor. There's a lot of avenues there. We're still working on getting everybody connected, but you can start there, see if we can get some of these folks talking to each other and fill some needs on both sides. Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate you putting that together for us so quickly and coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good questions, everyone. Okay. Next item is 2014 Grand List Errors and Omissions. Stuart?
Yes, we have one errors and omissions that the listers have forwarded to you for your acceptance and signatures. It has to do with a resident that just this year qualified for the veteran's exemption, which reduces the overall assessment by $40,000. This does require an action by the board to accept the proposal and sign the grand list change.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Motion of a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Just a quick question, Stuart. This individual has resided in the home for a period of time prior, after, or equal person this year?
Yes. My understanding is that the eligibility issue had not been established and that must be done by a date in May in order to qualify for the exemption. You must be at least 50% disabled and you must file the appropriate paperwork with the lister's office.
Okay. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thanks, Stuart.
Thank you.
We have a notice of a property tax sale, or property sale, a tax sale property.
Yes, we have acquired three properties through tax sale. The time for redemption has passed. These properties, I am proposing to the board be set for sale. The notice that I'm asking for your approval tonight provides for a 30-day notice before the board takes an action to sell one or all of the properties, should we get proposals. That proposal will be submitted to the manager's office no later than November 13th at 3:00 PM, which would give the staff an opportunity to review the proposals and prepare recommendations for the board's meeting on December 8th, which will follow the Thanksgiving weekend. And the board would then, at that meeting, make a determination whether to accept the proposals or reject them out of hand. We have provided the addresses, what the type of the use of the property is, currently single family, two single families and a duplex, and what the minimum bid is, and that is right now the rounded number for the amount of money that is delinquent to the town. It may be that proposals may contain less than the minimum bid, depending on the condition of the home and the proposal to rehabilitate it, but it's our goal to try to find and match up folks with these properties who can then put them back into productive use and back into our housing stock. So I'm asking for the board to approve the public notice that has been drafted and I will sign it and get it to the appropriate newspapers for distribution.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the notice?
So moved.
So moved, it was seconded.
I'll second it.
Okay, it was seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, what happens if there's other loans outstanding on these properties?
The tax sale has essentially wiped the slate clean of all but federal and state liens. So if there were outstanding mortgages, outstanding liens on the property, they have been wiped clean by the tax sale itself.
Are these houses all, these places all abandoned at present times?
Actually, we found that one of the properties was still occupied by the former owner. Turns out he was also under an arrest warrant and has been taken into custody.
Are these places habitable for the most part?
Yes, they're habitable. There are some significant repairs that are probably going to be required in some of the properties because many of them have had the water turned off for more than six months. Some have been without power for a period in excess of six months, so they're not walk-in, live-in, ready properties. You're going to have to do some work on it.
What are the properties, maybe for the record tonight and for the audience?
209 Maple Street, it's a single-family dwelling. 207 Silver Street, also a single-family dwelling, and 206 and 208 Branch Street, which is a duplex.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. Okay, the next item is the Morgan Street Wetlands, additional land acceptance. Dan, you going to lead us through this? All righty.
We'll give you a quick, I promise.
Dan Mox?
A long night tonight so far, but I'm here with Donald Campbell, who's the Southwest Regional Director for the Vermont Land Trust, and we're very thankful to the Land Trust and their help with the town and the folks that are trying to preserve this property. They've been very informative and helped, given us lots of direction and advice on how to proceed with a project like this. I know you folks have, we've talked to you folks a couple of times before about this project, so I'm not going to go into great detail except to kind of maybe just do a quick kind of overview of what we have here. I'll try to speak loudly. Just some history, you folks originally approved the Vermont Land Trust, working with the town and the friends of the Morgan Street Wetlands, now friends of the Wilmsack waters park, to develop an option for this 145-acre parcel right here. And we have that option in place with the seller, which is the Greenberg Trust. We have just recently started to negotiate and we think we're very close to coming to agreement for an additional 25 acres. And that's the main purpose for our meeting this evening, just to make sure that you folks are comfortable with the friends working to obtain that option with the Land Trust. And then if we do, are successful in raising all the funds necessary, you folks would be willing to accept that parcel in addition to the 145 acres we already have. Just to put in a big, a quick plug, because I know you guys are busy tonight and I don't want to take up a lot of time, total of about 168, 169 acres. We have walking trails, hiking trails, fishing access, kayak accessibility, great wetlands complex, some uplands that could be used for other purposes, just a real gem of a parcel. We, right smack dab in the middle of some other conservative parcels, including the One World Conservation Center, the Wild Woods, which I think most people are familiar with, and the Beach Street Ball Field, which will be a main access point for that, for this Quickly, just a reminder, we have obtained from the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, $122,000 grant, and we're very, very thankful to them for helping us to preserve this property. And as I mentioned, Vermont Land Trust has been really helpful as well, and the friends are working hard to put together the funds necessary to obtain these properties. And I'm just going to turn over very quickly to Donald to talk about our fundraising efforts, which we're just about kicking off, so that everybody at home can understand where we are and how we like to complete our fundraising drive. Donald?
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for having me here. It's a brief compliment before I get started, it's so great to work with the community that gets to these things before the 11th hour, and I really appreciate you asking for the help of the Vermont Land Trust in a nice, timely fashion. We tend to work on an awful lot of emergencies and it's been very nice to work on this project and not have it be a full-blown emergency the whole time, but to have it be a very, very pleasant process so far. I wanted to let you know that this draft case statement that I handed out to you is no longer entirely relevant because this was put together when we were just going to work with the town on this 144 acres. So the amount of money that needs to be raised and the number of acres that it depicts are both inaccurate, so that, as Dan mentioned, 144 acres will now have the additional 24, 25 acres here, and we're having to raise another $50,000 for that. So the fundraising that's being done is $100,000 of private funds. This is coming from, will be coming from private foundations and private individuals, and that will be blended with the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board money to pay for this project entirely. Right now, we're looking very good in fundraising, we're a little more than halfway through early commitments and we're about to start a letter-writing campaign and to start some serious public outreach, so we'll look forward to getting into that very soon. If we, if things go our way and if the friends of the Wilmsack Park group are successful, we should be able to close this thing, I hope I'm not jinxing it here, we should be able to close this thing in early winter, perhaps as early as January, so that would be our goal. As you know, the Vermont Land Trust would be in the position of holding a conservation easement on this project, but the conservation easement is one that's really tailored towards the town's uses.
Okay, any forward, any questions on this?
Are you going to have any more walking tours, et cetera, during the name, or somebody?
Well, we probably will. As you know, Shelley Stiles with the Bennington Conservation District has been taking a lead role and will continue to take a lead role in the evolution of this, and she's, I don't know if you were on the butterfly walk, but she's been working with birding and butterflies and there are some great trails there already. This is one of the things that's wonderful about it. It's not something that needs to be created from scratch. There are a lot of trails there that can be used today, it's just that the ownership is changing and that's why we're getting involved. So I expect there'll be more walks, but...
Could you plug in for the manager of the land?
Yeah, that's right, thanks. The Vermont Housing Conservation Board does require that the town conserve this property, as I say, and so we'll be holding a conservation easement, but it's a lighter conservation easement than most people would be used to. And it's based primarily on a management plan that gets created for the property, and Shelley Stiles will hopefully take a lead role in that, if you'd like her to. The management plan is something that gets developed during the first year of ownership and it is an opportunity for the public to participate and let their thoughts be known on what some good uses of it might be, and it also gives them a chance to volunteer and to participate. So the management plan ends up being a guiding document that select board would eventually have to approve, and then if the select board approves it and the Housing and Conservation Board also approves it, then it's good for 10 years and every 10 years you kind of revisit it and update it as necessary. So bottom line is, for people that wanted to get involved in this after the acquisition process, there will be a public, there will be multiple public meetings and multiple ways for the public to get involved in this.
Mike, did you have a question?
Hi, under ideal conditions, when will this all be wrapped up?
Well, I think, I don't know, it depends how you define wrapped up, you know? I'd like to think this is going to be one of those forever deals that we'll be working on for a long, long time. I don't mean the acquisition, I mean the enjoying of the park and the creating of the educational events and the bringing of the schools and the public and, you know, Mike was talking about working with local hostelers and inns and restaurants and whatnot to kind of make it something that is a further attraction for Bennington. So I expect and I hope it will be something that Bennington loves and continues to develop for a long time. Okay, it's not the answer you were looking for.
But signed seal, then delivered.
When are we going to close?
Yeah.
And I think probably, I think we can probably close this again, you know, if things go our way with the fundraising, if we're able to raise the last bit of funds and if we don't have any further snags in the title and all those legal things, I think we can probably close this in January. And then there'll be a year-long process during which the town will own it and there'll be a management plan developed. And then after that, I think that the town begins the long and fun process of owning and making available a natural area for public access.
So tell me again the amount of money that needs to be raised to pay?
Well, we're having to raise privately, so again, not including the Vermont Housing Conservation Board, we're having to raise privately $100,000. We have soft pledges for a little bit more than half of that right now, and we hope to, by the time we put something in the mail to any Bennington resident we can think of that might be interested in this, we hope to have about two-thirds of that in soft pledges. So we'll be trying to, that's the nut we have to crack at this point. And quite frankly, this has been a project that sometimes these things are very controversial, sometimes select boards drag us into the middle of a process that we don't want to be in. This hasn't been at all that way. It's been very enjoyable and everybody we've talked to has said, oh, that sounds like a great idea, I want to support that. And so we've had so far a lot of, a lot of signs of support.
Thank you.
We're not particularly worried about this campaign, but we are going to have to work hard to get it done this winter.
Okay.
Money is always...
All right. Go ahead, John. With this funding, is this primarily, the purpose of this funding, is it primarily to protect and conserve the property or is it also going to be dedicated to some of the potential pathways that are listed in the project plan?
Well, that's a good question. Right now, the budget is focused on acquisition, okay? So there's acquisition and the various costs that are kind of associated with acquiring that property. If the fundraising is particularly successful, and one of the things about fundraising that's tricky is that people don't always, sometimes they don't give enough and sometimes they give too much, so there's this kind of little bit of leeway that sometimes happens. And the way it's written right now is if we're able to raise more than what we need to acquire it, we'll be able to set some aside for the town's uses so that, so that the, some of the projects that might happen, like a wetland boardwalk or signage or trail development or informational kiosk or things like that, you know, would not be something that would have to come out of the town's pocket.
Well, so to acquire that property, at least the first parcel, that was the 122 that was mentioned, right?
Yes.
And then the second parcel is primarily the 50 to 100 plus the conservation fees or whatever goes along with that?
Yeah, the 122,000 was a blended grant from the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board that paid both for some of the acquisition as well as for some of the costs that are associated with that title search and baseline documentation report and things like that. The Vermont Housing Conservation Board requests when they do these community projects that communities come up with at least a third of the total project cost, which is the skin in the game factor. And so we were planning to raise, you know, roughly a third of that, but we were very successful in the silent phase and that allowed us to think about, well, gee, while we're at it, maybe this other parcel is coming up for sale from the Greenberg Trust and it connects directly to state land and directly to the Wild Woods and it would make possible a whole number of trails that wouldn't... And it would make possible a whole number of trails that wouldn't, might not otherwise be possible. And so we expanded the fundraising goal from $50,000 to $100,000. And that's the, that's the nut we're trying to crack now. Have I answered your question? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, for the most part, what I was looking for was the cost of each parcel and then the cost to conserve or protect. And then, what money was going to be left over for the potential pathways that were listed.
Yeah. Right now, we're just fundraising for the acquisition.
Right.
100% acquisition. And if we're, if we're more successful, you know, we aspire to setting up a little bit of a fund that would help, help the project. But we wouldn't want to get the select board's expectations up on that right now. Right now, we're just trying to raise enough money to acquire and to have the town of Bennington accept it.
Do either of you have an idea of what the, what a total number might look like to be able to go through fully with some of the, you know, some of the pathways, some of the things you mentioned? If you were able to raise enough money, what that might look like?
Well, you know, I should probably let Dan talk since he has a lot of division on this. But my sense is that you have a lot of existing infrastructure there already. I know I'm repeating myself a little bit. This map doesn't show as well as, this map doesn't also show. But if you peer at this map, you can see, very carefully, you can see little trails that kind of crisscross through this property. Now, this, the largest section of this is a wetland area. And really, a beautiful, pristine area that you couldn't put trails through. It's too wet. But you could kayak through it. So one of the things that's been talked about is creating a kayak launch there.
I guess one of the things that is especially attractive about this particular parcel is, as soon as we acquire it, it will be accessible to folks because there are the trails that are already there. There is the fishing access. There is the access to kayak. And there is parking already. What we think is probably the most important thing to do right away is to build awareness and perhaps some signage, so that folks know how to access the things that already exist there. So there's really not a huge amount of upfront infrastructure cost to make it usable immediately. Would it be great to cut some more trails? Would it be great to have a much easier kayak launch? Yes, all those things do cost money and will, in the future, be fundraising for those, assuming that they make it into the management plan. But really, with just a little bit of signage and perhaps a brochure, we can make this property immediately accessible and enjoyable to whoever wants to, to access it.
With your dedication to increase the private funding from 50 to $100,000, is there also an opportunity to go back to the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board and ask for more money as well? Perhaps in a second round?
Yeah, not really, is the honest truth. You know, at this point, we are looking at a fairly short option period. So we had to get an option from the trust to give us a certain period of time on these. And we're looking at kind of winter, a winter-time closing. Vermont Housing Conservation Board is, you know, only has so much funding.
There's annual reviews.
Right. And so they've spent out their funding for 2014 and the first half of 2015. And they'd have new funding available in the fall of 2015. But we can't wait that long.
The current owners aren't open to potentially pushing that off if funding doesn't...
I think it's in everybody's best interest to move this forward. And frankly, there's been quite, you know, there seems to be quite an appetite for really trying to get this done this winter. And so we're, that's going to be our first choice. If we can't get it done, then we could go back to the trust and ask for them to extend options and whatnot. But I don't think we want to go that route.
So Dan, you're looking for consensus basically tonight to move forward until there's something to actually move on?
We want to make sure that you folks are comfortable with the direction we're going, because the Vermont Land Trust is going to expend considerable effort and some funding to secure this option and for the additional acreage. So we want to make sure you folks are all comfortable with that. And that's really all we're looking for tonight from you folks, is that, is that consensus to move forward so everyone knows that that's the direction we want.
Personally, I have to say that, you know, this addition to what was just really the One World Conservation Center has taken that Greenberg's gift and made it just way larger and more significant than I think any of us ever imagined. You can get at it from so many ways. If you've been to Hill Dean recently, they've taken over their meadows now. They've got a walk, a boardwalk out into the wetland that runs across the wetland. It is, I believe it's ADA accessible. And there's a landing there where you can overlook the wetland and watch the birds fly in and everything. And it's, I mean, I'd look at this and that same potential is there to create something that everybody can enjoy and really get a window into a part of nature we don't get to see just driving around. So I'm really impressed by the direction it's going.
One final point that I think is really exciting about this parcel, if you look at it. It's surrounded on three sides, really dense neighborhoods. And people can walk there easily and it's really close to town. So we're surrounded by nature outside of town, but this is very, very accessible nature.
This is part of town, yeah. This is correct.
I know that Mike wanted to...
Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I just want to say this, I want to say this is one of the best projects, or the best projects, since I've been back, been in this 17 years. And I don't think you're going to have to worry about the money. I think it'll come in from businesses, donations from corporate. And I will work with these folks if they want me to, to publicize it on Cast TV. This is our ocean view. But often, if anything, it's missing one thing, it's an ocean view. This is our version of it. If anybody's ever been down to Sandwich, Massachusetts, they have a trail system down there. It's called Heritage or something. It's a lot grander than this, but not on the natural part of it. They put in different things you can see and everything else. And they draw from all over. This here, if this doesn't put this side of Bennington, I mean, this side of Bennington with the downtown back on the map, then there's something wrong with us as a community. And I know the community, where they understand this, will give any money to support this. Because this is not, you can't lose with this as far as bringing people to Bennington. And I would recommend that we get through the hotels, the hotels, and maybe even set up a guide service and do it on our website or whatever, that people can call a certain number when they want to come and see this or talk about it or what they're going to get. And they spend weekends here to do this. If it's designed the way I think it is, it's just going to be tremendous for the size of that.
You can't build this.
You don't. God builds it.
That's crazy. All right. Do I have any objections to presenting a consensus to go ahead with this for, towards the land acquisition?
I echo Mike's comments. I mean, this is the best project that I've seen since I've been on the board. If we have more of these coming our way, and maybe not to this level, we're going to be successful. One of the things that I would like to comment on, there are some amenities that could be added to the launch areas and that type of thing. Has there been any feasibility done relative to location and cost of those?
Not so much cost yet, but we have had detailed site studies, including detailed mapping of wetlands and locations where there's access for water launching, launches. So we, and we've had biologists out there, we've had wetland folks out there, we've had recreation folks out there. And they've all looked very closely and identified in the initial management plan those types of amenities that could be added. And we'll be, as we develop the final or the management, management plan, we'll be adding some meat to the bones on those, thinking about costs and those sorts of things. I would say, except for boardwalks, which are, can be really expensive, most of the things we're talking about are really low-cost. Kayak launches, improvements to trails, small bridges across waterways. All those things are relatively low-cost. Not no cost, but low cost.
Good, thanks. With the projects that you do anticipate approaching when, when this closes, what is the best time of year to try and undergo those projects? Will we be looking to try and make some quick decisions? It's something that we should try and anticipate now, moving into 2016, 2015?
Honestly, the, what we want to do is make sure that we're very inclusive of the public and the neighborhood as we develop the management plan before we jump into something of any significant cost. But as far as maintaining the existing trails, perhaps getting some signage up, that stuff can happen very quickly and that's probably where we would put our efforts.
Yeah, the only thing, again, the management plan is a time when a lot of different things can be considered. So, you know, there might be a lot of different ideas on the table. And there might be too many for the property. And so there would be kind of a winnowing process of what does our community really need? You know, do we need a, do we really want a dog-walking park? Or do we really want, you know, a wheelchair-accessible trail on the old trolley bed? Or do we want fishing points? Or do we want a kayak launch? Or do we want listening points and, or blinds, you know? So there are a lot of different things you could do. And you could, you could have many more ideas than you would actually want to get done on a property. So the management plan is the time to kind of work all that out. And just to be clear, you know, there's an approval function that you folks will get to, you would want and you will have to approve all of that, so.
Well, it sounds like we have a consensus for you to move forward to that next step, so.
Great. Yeah, so we have to put down a $5,000 payment to, you know, secure the option on this next property.
Right.
And we're happy to do that. It's applicable towards the purchase price, but we don't want to put Land Trust money down unless you, unless you want to accept it.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Appreciate all the people who've worked on that. This is really developing beautifully. All right. The next item is the manager's report.
Yeah, I didn't have any formal report for you this evening, but I do have a couple of issues that have occurred within the last several days that I'd like to report to you. The Benmont Avenue Bridge, or the Hunt Street Bridge, depending on how you want to call it, the bids have been opened and awarded. The contractor who has received the bid from the state wants to pursue a very aggressive schedule and is hoping to start the project in November. Originally, the project was not supposed to get going full bore until next March. And we would be pushing the major portion of the bridge closure into the next winter. They hope to start now. We had a pre-construction conference Friday morning, went about three and a half hours. The state of Vermont and the contractor have agreed to the, ultimately to the, starting in November. On the project itself, we will have probably one lane traffic on that bridge throughout the winter. And the only issue is whether or not that ends up speeding up the contract completion date from a point somewhere in 2016 to a point closer to the winter of 2015. It looks like it's possible the contractor's very, very convinced, they're out of Scaticote, New York. They're convinced that they can do this project in that timeframe. And so we are going to be going forward with the Benmont Bridge. I think there are some formal, formal steps the state needs to take because it's a federally funded, state-funded project. We have our 5% already set aside, so there's no issue for us. And as I mentioned in my manager's report the last time, the waterline project that we asked to be included came in at about $110,000 or less than we anticipated. And you will see that in your FY '16 budget in April and May when the water fund projects come to you. So that was very good news. The second, I had a meeting this evening that ramped, I had to leave before it ended at about 5:15 this evening. This was the meeting of a group of communities, nine of us communities, that have been working with the Bennington County Regional Commission to develop the solid waste implementation plan. In the past, Bennington and Woodford have developed a solid waste implementation plan for our transfer station. That is the Bennington Transfer Station. And that has been approved by the state and governs how we operate, what educational opportunities there are, how many hazardous waste collection days, those kinds of things. This year, as you know, the board agreed to work with the BCRC to try to expand their five-town Northshire group into a nine-town consortium, so to speak. And I use that in quotes. Today's meeting, those folks who are at the meeting, and I think it was most of the towns were represented, have agreed to develop a model alliance structure, which will allow all of, all of the towns to work together cooperatively through a private contractor or a public contractor such as BCRC, ultimately to implement not only the SWIP, but to begin to share our facilities in a much more convenient, user-friendly way. And as this develop, as this process develops, I'll be keeping you folks informed. There's going to have to be a joint municipal survey committee that is appointed. At the present time, we're kind of an ad hoc group of select board members, staff members from some of the major towns, and interested parties. We're going to formalize that structure as we, as we begin to prepare documents. And we'll be back before you to talk a little bit more formally about how this process is going to develop. And that's all I have.
Stu, the press conference that happened on Friday, do you have any details regarding the funding that the governor was talking about?
I do not.
Where that's coming, the little, and folks saw the paper on Saturday. There was a press conference, the governor came in town a little quickly and had a, and announced some funding available for, for treatment for opiate addiction and other services and for a facility. Details on that are a little light right now. But I talked to Senator Sears, who was president at that. He has offered to come to one of our meetings and give us whatever details have developed in that time. It's a big, big topic. We had an opiate forum that was hosted here that many of us attended. I was at the Treatment Subcommittee on that, that night. And one of the things I found that night and since then in looking into it is that, even though we have all these phone numbers and hotlines, when someone calls, they very seldom have someplace they can send you right away. I've talked to people who've been told they have to wait a month to see someone for treatment or to see a psychiatrist or something to that effect, even, even non-drug-related issues. So I do believe that there is a need for some, for a treatment facility. The governor didn't give us a lot of notice to get in. And I've also contacted their office and asked them to give us a little more heads up when they come down so that one of us can be available to discuss our concerns and ask questions on that. So I apologize, we don't have more details on that. We're going to work on that. And we're work, I'm working on that presently. So, but that's good news. Just one second, Jim. Anybody who was involved in that opiate forum and it was in one of those subcommittees, work on something, if you do have a significant development you'd like to bring to the select board to put some light on, I invite you to do that as well. So you have a question on that, Jim?
Yeah, as long as we're on the subject. Stu, when, when were you notified that the governor was going to be down?
I had an indication a week before that the governor might be coming to Bennington last Friday. Had no confirmation and did not realize he was going to be in town until I returned from the pre-construction meeting and was heading out the door to lunch at about 12:30 that afternoon. And was told that Mike Carrington was looking for me because there was a press conference going to be at 1 o'clock across the street. So that's the notice that I had. Erica Marthage posted it on her Facebook page the day before at 1:19 PM exactly. And my concern here is that, you know, before, shortly after I got elected, you and I sat down together and you asked me, "Come before me if there's an issue that you have so that we're not blindsided." And I think this demonstrated, demonstrates another issue where we, the elected body of this town, were not allowed to be represented there. You know that this, I have been very passionate about this particular subject. As a matter of fact, after the very first drug bust, I came to your office and I said we needed a treatment center. And do you recall what you said? Because if you don't, I'll tell you. You said, "No, not in our backyard. The chief of police will never go for that." Well, it's come to this point where we do need it. And I hammered both you and Mook, Tom D., Brian Campion. So my point here is that, in the, I've been over this with you before. We are the elected body of Bennington. And the way this appears to me, anyway, is that when we're not present for something like this, something so important that speaks to poverty, crime, higher taxes, because we're going to have to deal with this. And we, the elected body, are not participants in this. It makes it look as if not only are we incompetent, that we, the elected body, are not involved. But this is coming top-down rather than bottom-up, which is where it did come from. It was the governor's press conference, yes.
And my message to the governor's office was that, you know, I just spoke to the governor about this three weeks ago in Essex, about this very topic. And, you know, he didn't say anything about coming to Bennington. He didn't say, he just talking about treatment in Bennington. And, you know, and nobody contests. So I sent our email address, our unified email address to them. And I pointed out that there's no way that we can support these initiatives, that we can get behind anything if we don't know about them. And they're not going to succeed unless we have the collaboration that was talked about at the opiate forum. I mean, everybody's going to be on board. Paul Desette said it, you know, Erica Marthage said, everybody seems to understand that. But, you know, we're in an election season. People are making whistle stops. And, you know, if it's serious and you want our backing, you need, you need to contact the people that are here. And, you know, to blow through towns and say this, I cannot speak to the credibility of the financing. I can't speak to what it's going to be used for. I can't speak to anything to that. And that, you know, so that's what I pointed out to the governor's office. I spoke to Dick Sears as well. He apologized that we were not made aware of it. And I did the same thing with Senator Leahy. He came to town and nobody knew about it. You know, I mean, somebody has to, at some point, say, "We're going to Bennington. We should let people in Bennington know that we're going to be..." should let people in Bennington know that we're gonna be there, not just show up."
Exactly.
And keep going.
How difficult would it have been to send an email or just pick up the phone to one of us, just one of us?
You're talking to Erica Marthage or the governor?
No, 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 I'm talking about you.
I didn't know, I didn't know till 12:30.
What time did you know, Mike?
11:00. I sent an email to the select.
Yeah, I never got that.
I never got it, did you get it?
It's irony of ironies. I think, you know, this is election season, the press conferences come and they go, and you know, if you look at the representatives on the steps of a police station, it represented the electorate of the, and I think it's important to remind our electorate that we're gonna be voting next week. So that was certainly a way to do that. I don't, I think the devil are in the details of this, and I don't think we should go off half-cocked. Why don't we just let it play out and deal with the plan as it is presented to us? Because I think there's a lot to come.
There is a lot to come. We're not, we're not taking open questions right now, because we can, we can talk after this, but I'm sorry. Hang on while, we're in other business right now, so.
I can say this, though, I can, I think that it's important that folks understand that there is a commitment from the United Counseling Service, from Dr. Kloster and from, and from the hospital to form this treatment center and to work together. They, I know they have been working hard to come up with a model that will work for them. The funding obviously is probably the key to make it happen, but right now, they're not talking about anything concrete happening until probably March of next year.
Well, that's good. Well, when we, as we, when Senator Sears is ready, has some details, he's offered to bring that information forward, so. You had anything else, Stu?
No, that's it for me.
That's it, okay. Other business?
Let's vote, actually.
Michael, same thing?
Yeah, same thing, that's it.
James?
Vote.
Justin? John?
Just that I saw a note about the rec center pool, was it with something, some issues with it? It was closed for today? Is anything happening with that?
I'm not aware.
No.
That it was closed.
That was it. All right. Yeah, Election Day is November 4th. You can vote at the town office during regular business hours. If you are not gonna be available that day, if you are available that day, please come to the firehouse, you know, here or in North Bennington if that's where you live. And 7 to 7 is normal, right, Stu?
7 AM to 7 PM.
7 AM to 7 PM, polls are open, and again, you can go during normal business hours and see the town clerk and cast your votes. Thank you, everyone. I need a motion to go into executive session, we have to discuss several contracts in a second.
Second.
And all in favor? All right, we're gonna go into executive session. Appreciate everyone staying around, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.